All right, I got four o'clock. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, February the 21st, 2023, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody in the audience and everybody online that's joining us today. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Pastor Croll will lead us in the invocation. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you all bow your heads with you, please? Lord God, you're so good to us, and we thank you for this day. We thank you for these commissioners. We continue to ask your blessing on the county, even use them to be a blessing to the county. Grant them wisdom, grant them good health, unity in their decisions. And thank you, Father. Ask your blessing also on all the businesses of the county, even as well we recognize today. All these good things come from your hand, Lord. You pray, Jesus. Please, Steve. Mr. Knoll, any deletions, additions, or corrections of public meeting agenda?
Yes, sir. I'd like to, since we had a scheduling conflict and weren't able to meet in an administrative session, I'd like to recommend we move the appointments that were scheduled for the administrative session to just after the recognition for Deep Creek Lavender Farms.
All right, thank you. Any questions about that? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Agenda approved by mutual consent as amended. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any questions, concerns with the minutes? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Second motion and a second minute is approved by mutual consent. And the first item on our agenda today is a recognition by the Economic Development Department for Deep Creek Lavender Farm. And Connor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Paul. I have to say, these meetings are super exciting. I'd love to honor our businesses here. And now, for many of you that have been here and those watching online, we've been doing this for several months now. It actually falls under what we call our Business Milestone Program. Of course, I'm an entertainer by trade, so I'm going to take this moment for a shameless plug. If we have businesses that are celebrating their big deal moments, we want to celebrate that with you. So if you're watching online, if you're here today, and you know somebody or a business that's celebrating a big deal moment, we want to celebrate with them. We want to bring them in here and recognize them. Now, this one, distinct pleasure of mine today. I've known Ann and Scott Davidson for a long time. They are the owners of Deep Creek Lavender Farm. They've been a well-known attraction and institution in the county for many years. We're celebrating 10 years with them today. We actually have a proclamation from the commissioners. Would you guys like to present that now?
Sure. It is with great pleasure that on this February 21st, 2023, Board of Garrett County Commissioners' commendation for the Deep Creek Lavender Farm's 10th anniversary. We, the Board of County Commissioners of Garrett County, Maryland, and our citizens are happy to join together to extend our sincerest congratulations to Deep Creek Lavender Farm on its 10th anniversary. Since 2013, Deep Creek Lavender Farm has grown and bloomed in Garrett County, serving as a local attraction and handmade lavender home goods store to visitors and locals alike. Congratulations to the Davidson family on this milestone and exemplary work and professionalism of the past 10 years. May these years be an inspiration for continued success, signed by Commissioners Titchinal, Savage, and myself. Congratulations, guys. This is very exciting. And I would invite you all up for a picture and to give your acceptance speech and whatever else. Come on, either way.
Either way is fine.
Ryan, he's got it.
Appreciate it.
Get over to the center.
We moved you over here with Larry.
Have you all asked to say anything?
Appreciate it. No, we just, we appreciate the recognition, and we wouldn't have picked a better place, could not have picked a better place in Garrett County to start this business. We got a lot of weird looks when we said what we were going to do. A lot of old-time farmers just kind of looked at us and went, uh-huh. But I think we changed their mind and showed it that we can create a successful business here in Garrett County with lavender. So we appreciate all the support.
Thank you. And when are you guys opening up for the season?
May 28th. We open the Friday Memorial Day weekend, and it's a seasonal business, but we, we're kind of all year-round with orders and things like that. But we will be open May 28th, and we'll run through the summer, and hopefully with this nice kind of mild winter, we'll have a really great growing season.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very nice. Congratulations. And Connor and Kim, thank you guys for running this program. It's been a great addition to what we do, so thank you. All right, on to the amended part of the agenda. Now for the appointments, let's take them all as a slate. Mr. Knoll, what do you have for?
Yes, sir. We have appointments to three different boards. The first one is the Deep Creek Watershed Board of Zoning Appeals. We have an appointment for an alternate to the board, Haley Gillespie. She has agreed to serve. This is for a three-year term on the Deep Creek Watershed Board of Zoning Appeals. The second one is for the Garrett County Planning Commission. This is also for an alternate. This is for Julie Friend, and Ms. Friend has agreed to accept the position on the planning commission. And then, we have appointments, we have an appointment to the Community Action Board. Last meeting, we had four members to appoint. We have heard back from the fifth member, so the recommendation from the Community Action Board is to appoint Robin Jones as a member to the board for a four-year term.
All right. Any questions on those recommended appointments? And all are willing to serve?
All are willing to serve, yes, sir.
All right. If there are no questions or comments, I will take a motion to accept the nominations for, the three nominations for these boards that came forth.
Motion to accept the nominations.
All right, we have a motion to accept the slate. We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and right along that line, the next item on the agenda is more of an announcement. So, we do have an opening on the Police Accountability Board Administrative Charging Committee. If you all remember, this was from legislation, I think from two years ago, that we had to create these, every county has to create these, create these boards for police accountability. There is a vacancy on our Administrative Charging Committee. If you are interested, the member is required to attend a 40-hour training program. Training is scheduled for the end of March, and it is in Allegheny County. If you are interested in filling that role, please submit a letter of interest and a resume to our county administrator, Kevin Knoll, at KNoll@garettcounty.org. If you have any questions about that, feel free to reach out to any of us. If you want more information, Mr. Knoll will be the guy to reach out to for more information on that.
Just for some clarification, we did have a full slate of five members, and we had a member that had to resign recently, so we do have an opening. That's how we...
What is, if I were someone who was interested in this, the first question I would ask is, what is, outside of the training, what is the time commitment?
That is to be determined, because it depends on how many complaints we made.
It's complaint-driven, so it could be none, or it could be 50.
Correct. So we don't anticipate this group being very active, but they have to be available when, when something comes up.
Okay. Just a couple other announcements. Our next public meeting will be March 6th. Here at 4:00, we are getting into the budget cycle, so starting, I believe, in end of March, we'll start our budget presentations for the folks that we fund that want to come in and request more money, or just give a presentation to the public of where that money goes to. When we fund them, that would be the time, that would be the process for that. All of those have been turned in to finance. Our finance director is massaging that, putting it in place to put a balanced budget together for us to then start to look at and determine where all of the money's going to end up. Certainly, and we continue to get emails, and as I've mentioned, the last two meetings will mention again, we are aware of the assessments. That will be part of the conversation. When we look at constant yield, there will be a constant yield hearing that will take place in May. Then we'll have a budget hearing. We'll put our proposed budget out. You will, everyone in the county and all the agencies will have an opportunity to look at that, present any comment. Then we'll have a hearing on that, do the same thing, and then we'll pass the budget to be in place for the beginning of the fiscal year. On top of that, and, and I think pretty exciting announcement, we are in the process of, I think most people know that last session, the state of Maryland passed a fund for, specific for Western Maryland. It's affectionately called the George Board, but it is the Western Maryland Benefit Economic Development something or other. It's, it's got a name that is long enough that we'll just call it the George Fund. We are in the process of vetting projects that have been submitted to take advantage of that fund. I am excited to say that Garrett County, I am fortunate enough to sit on that board. We have received, I think, Kim, 30 applications from Garrett County, so we received 30 applications of people that were seeking funding from that, from, from our section. That funding is a little over $6 million. Most of those, all of those projects are very good projects. I don't think there are any that I would say is a frivolous project. They were all very worthy of funding. Not all of them meet the criteria for the funding, so I think that is important to be said. But I think when it's all said and done, and Garrett County's allotment is announced, you will see projects that will do exactly what the fund is designed to do, which is, most importantly, create jobs. Secondly, expand tax revenue, whether that be property tax revenue from a business expansion, whether it be income tax revenue from people that live here that would be paid higher wages, whether it's royalty revenue on something, or trucking, or all of those things that, that you can think of. There are some pretty good projects, and it's going to be, I think, when we announce them, people will be pleased with it. And a lot of our businesses here in the county, the other nice thing about that is it gives us an opportunity to see what our businesses are doing and what their plans are. There are a lot of businesses in our county that are looking to expand right now, which is great. So that, that's a, a good thing. We have a couple of things in the Economic Development Hopper that are exciting. It's probably the most exciting time for economic development since Larry and I have been on the board. We'll give all the credit to Ryan, since he's the new guy. But it, it looks like the next couple of years could be pretty exciting. The, so the George Board, the funding was put in place for this fiscal, and it was divided, what the board decided, and it is to benefit Garrett, Allegheny, and Washington County as Western Maryland. And it's been decided by that group of individuals, and so on that board are three commissioners, one from each county, three people from Economic Development some way or another, and three people from those particular chambers, Chamber of Commerce's. It's staffed, pretty much the staffing is done by tri-county council, because they already sort of deal with Washington, Garrett, and Allegheny Counties. And the chair of that group is Andrew Sargent from Department of Commerce. The decision was made to allocate that money equally between Garrett, Allegheny, and Washington County, rather than project-based. And I think the, the goal of this group as constructed right now is to continue that process, which I think is a positive for us. So July 1, there will be another round of money coming, to the tune of another, yeah, so about 3 more million, give or take 3.3 million per county. So there will be a second round of applications. Once we get through this round, we're hoping to disperse that money in March, make the announcement of the projects that have been funded in March, disperse that money, and then start soliciting projects for the second round, which would then come about right after July 1. So I think all of that is, is pretty exciting. Like we said, I think we've got some good projects in the till for that, and then we've also got some potential projects outside of the George Fund that we're working on right now, and really all over the county. You know, Northern Garrett, Central Garrett, Southern Garrett, a couple different places in those areas, so it, it really is comprehensive. If we can pull all of this off, no pressure, Kim, and Connor, it will be, I'm reluctant to use this term because it's a little cliché, but it will be somewhat game-changing, I think, if we can pull a lot of these off. There will be noticeable benefit to, to the county. So all of that is good news. With that, anything else from the other commissioner?
Just that I'll take credit for that.
Yeah, exactly. Take the credit now, because the bad will be coming, buddy. Any, any public comments at this time? Yes, sir.
Who were the other Garrett County members that are on that board that you were talking about, the economic development person and the chamber person?
So, actually, Kim sits on that board as an ex-officio for us. I sit on that board on Garrett County. Former Senator Edward sits on that board as a member of the Development Corporation, and Will Reblaski from the Chamber of Commerce sits on that board. And then Allegheny County has their three, and Washington County has, has theirs.
Is that in the law?
Yeah, and, and that's in the law. Who sits there is in the law. Not particularly the people's name, but the titles of those people. It's a good question. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mike. You're on the roll.
I guess I'll have another question. You're excited about all this new investment in economic development. We have a new economic development strategy, or draft, that's being circulated, and I think it's qualitatively different than previous economic development strategies. I think it's, I think it's focused, I think it's short, and I think it has doable recommendations in it. Two-thirds of the main objectives deal with empowering workforce, worker education, and housing. Given all the initiatives you talked about, is there a complementary part that's going to address affordable workforce housing, so that you can have the workers to live here that actually take those jobs as those companies expand?
Absolutely.
So what, what would be in the 24 budget that would move that forward?
Well, we'll have to wait till we get to the 24 budget process to answer that question definitively. What I can tell you, in talking with you, and talking with Monique, and talking with Chrissy, and talking with Lynn, and talking with Lynn, and talking with Ryan, obviously, I think we're all on the same page. This is something that has to be addressed. We sat in a meeting this morning. I know Monique was there, Thomas was there, a bunch of people in the room were there, that specifically talked about affordable housing, and how it's a nationwide issue. It's not an urban or a rural issue, and the answer is not going to be solved. And, and I think Dr. Braun was absolutely correct this morning when he said, just like broadband infrastructure, the solution is not going to be solved without a significant investment from the government. And that investment is going to have to come, primarily, at the end of the day, from the feds, for the amount of investment that's going to have to be made. But there is also going to have to be an investment by the state and the local governments as well. We have been committed to that. We have looked at several projects. We've discussed in public several projects that we're currently working on, and we are committed to funding that will be, it will be a substantial amount of money for our budget at the end of the day. We think they're good projects, so we'll, we'll discuss that more when we get into the budget. We do have some private sector folks, not many yet. I hope, as obviously, private sector, I think, can always do it better than government, although they're going to need some government help to pull it off. There are some private sector people that are looking at some projects that I think are very worthy, that if there's a way for us to partner with them, I think we would be open to doing that. And it will be, I, I think, the answer that we all are looking for, we're going to differ, I mean, there's no way we're all going to see something and say, yeah, this is the way to do it. I think we're all going to differ on exactly what needs to be done, but I think we all agree that something needs to be done. I also think that we all agree that it's not just homeownership, although I think that's a significant piece of it, but it's also going to be quality rentals, especially for part-time workers that are going to school when trying to work, and, and trying to find their way into the housing market, so on and so forth. We do have some plans to try to address all of those, so we'll see how that plays out. There's, there's a lot more detail that needs to be fleshed out before we're ready to roll that out, although we have talked about the projects and where they're going to be, and, you know, one will be in Grantsville, one will be in McHenry, and one will be in Oak. And I think people will be pleased with them when we get to that point. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Staying on that point, Paul, of course, within the budget itself, as you're preparing for it, I think that what people are interested in seeing is that the budget addresses where the gap really lies. So I think we all know Community Action does a pretty decent job of providing housing for people more in that low-income range, but that gap exists, right? Where Community Action has almost a hard stop. And the next available house is 278,000, when you can only afford 150. And I think what, what I would ask as a concerned citizen is, how is that budget going to be delineated between what Community Action does today and what they need? Because the gap isn't addressed currently, and I think people at least want to know that a particular portion of that budget is going to go towards that gap.
I agree with you. I think we all agree with that, and I would venture to go so far to say that our investment, from a county government perspective, will be, I won't necessarily say solely, but primarily dedicated to that gap, to what we would define as, you'll have 50 different words for it, but this would be more market-rate housing, or workforce housing, or whatever you want to call it, rather than subsidized housing. And there is a difference.
There is a big difference.
So, I duly noted. Your comment is well-taken and understood, and I think you'll get no argument from any of us on that. It's an excellent point.
I definitely agree with Paul, but you just said something there that, you know, where Community Action stops in the 270,000 price range, there's a lot of builders out there that think 270,000 price range is affordable housing.
Right.
And, you know, to get them to build something in the 150 range is a very tough thing to do. So we are, we've talked about this, and we are working, hopefully, on a solution to maybe bring a builder in, or a couple builders in, to get them to bid on more than one house, get them to build on a, a community of houses. And that way, they can, they can be building a million-dollar project, but one house at a time, and in that price range.
To your point, and you talked about it this morning in that meeting, the community development stopped with the housing crash. Essentially, builders weren't willing to go in and build wholesale communities any longer, and take on the speculative nature of that business. And therein lies where you guys are going to be so important, right? So that we can get communities developed. And we won't be able to do that without, like, consideration around things like the infrastructure that goes into those communities, the taxes, however that lays out. And again, I think we just want to see it earmarked in the budget in a way that we understand it's addressing the gap.
I think, we agree. Let's just leave it at that for now. I, I think you won't get any disagreement from us. Good, good point, now, good point. Any other questions? Mr. Bell?
I have a comment. You talked at the town hall about some things you had in the works that were bigger projects. And I hope, for me personally, it's just me personally, if I look at a global problem, it's sort of overwhelming. Now, you guys are better at that, and that's why you can pay the big bucks, I guess.
When did that start?
I'm more of an incrementalist. And we know that there was a federal presentation about pulling money to do affordable housing. We know that the state is going to be doing something on affordable housing grants. You guys in the past have been very successful at competing for other money to help leverage money that you're investing. I think those are two possible funds. I'm just wondering if it's possible to have some, at least, an incremental step in the budget, where you partner with, say, the Alliance for Workforce Housing, so we can go to these people and compete for funds by saying, look, we have a partnership in the county, we're already moving forward, it's incremental, the problem's much bigger, we need to have your money. For example, the, the room tax, which we paid for 15 years, is now up to 8%. And, and only 3/4 of that is earmarked for economic development. About a million dollars goes to the chamber, a million and a half runs the partner of economic development here that helps a lot of businesses. There's still about a million dollars that's not, they're close to general funds, I guess. Can that be sort of earmarked as an incremental step to start doing some of the things the businesses at, at that town hall said about rehabbing properties? Some sort of a, a small step to say, look, we've got our ore in the water, we're working with this nonprofits in our county, and a position, Garrett, to be more successful in competing for money, because you always got to have something on the table?
Potentially, yes. The short, the short answer to your question is, is it possible? Yes. I would, I would be remiss if I didn't add, because I've spent eight years of my time here doing it. Some of that money does go to the towns specifically, which never happened before. I'm actually quite proud that it does, and would argue with anybody that think it shouldn't, because I think they play a vibrant role in our economic development for what they do. But they, the, the towns do get a piece of that money as well. But yeah, to, to your point, and we've talked about that, so that money, just so that everybody's aware, we're talking about the accommodations tax. It, it is supposed to, in Garrett County, goes specifically to either promotion or economic development. And so the question that we've had in the eight years that Larry and I have been here, and that now that Ryan's on the board, I, I know we'll have this conversation, because we've had it every year. What, you know, and we've talked about this for years, ARC never categorized housing as economic development. I think, and, and I was glad to hear Dr. Braun mention this this morning, like, I think that mindset is shifting, and I think we're seeing that, although to recodify everything will take time to get there. It's not like they can just snap their fingers, and next year, we can spend all this money on affordable housing. But we're getting there. The, the state has identified this as... The state has identified this as a issue, and they want money to be able to put into that, so I'll be curious to see what that looks like and what stipulations are put on that at the end of the day. But yeah, I think we could, I think we would have some leeway in our own budget to say, we view affordable housing as economic development, and therefore can use some of this money for that. To your point, yes. Anyone else? All right, well, the next meeting, as we said, is March 6th, right here. We'll see everybody back then. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Need adjourn? Good conversation. Thank you.